We are going to call to order this regular meeting of the Miami Special Utility Authority for Tuesday, March 17th. Item on the agenda is invocation by the Pastor Sacred Heart Catholic Church, Reverend Carl Kirkmeier.
Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, would ask that you join me in this invocation as we join the monks at Clear Creek, not Clercreek, at St. Gregory's Abbey in Shawnee, Oklahoma, who have asked us during the season of Lent and this year of consecrated life to join them in prayer. Prayer for Lent. "A loving Father, your beloved Son, Jesus, came to heal the sick, to grant pardon to sinners, to give comfort to those who mourn, and to bestow the gift of eternal life upon those who place their trust in Him. In the name of Jesus and through His merits, I now turn to you in faith. Extend your mercy to me and to my loved ones. Heal us of our weaknesses, grant pardon for our sins, comfort us in our sorrows, and extend to us the gift of eternal life in your divine presence. Let this Lent be a time of renewal for all who seek you, that your church may worship you in spirit and in truth, and work effectively to build up your kingdom according to your will. I ask this through Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit now and forever. Amen."
Amen.
Please join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is public input, unscheduled personal appearances. Anyone in the audience that wants to address the authority on any of the agenda items? There being none, item five is consent agenda. Staff is recommending items six through eight for the consent agenda. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve items six through eight in the consent agenda.
Second. Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
Forrester.
Aye.
Sharbit.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye. Item nine directs to the attorney regarding pending claim against Data Manic. David, if you would just work with staff to submit a contract for approval on that item. Thank you. Item 10, other new business, if any. Any new business? Dean, anything?
Not at this time, Your Honor.
Staff reports, written reports are in your packet available, and staff is available for questions. Any questions?
No.
Trustee announcements? Future agenda planning, Dean, anything there?
No, no, Your Honor.
And item 14 is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn the SUA?
Motion adjourned.
And second?
Second.
Roll call.
Sharbit.
Aye.
Forrester.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye, thank you. We will now call to order this regular meeting of the Miami City Council for Tuesday, March 17th. Item two, public input, unscheduled personal appearances. Anyone in the audience that wants to address the council on any of the agenda items? There being none, item three is a proclamation designating March 22nd, 2015, as Willie and Jane Osborne Day on the campus of NEO A&amp;M College within City Hall. It says Mayor Schultz, and I know I've seen that, but I don't have a copy of it.
It was already signed.
Okay.
And thought you would read in the packet if you wanted to read it.
Okay. We're going to move to item four, the consent agenda. Staff is recommending items five through eight for the consent agenda. Any questions? If not, we would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve items five through eight.
And second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Forrester.
Aye.
Sharbit.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye. Item nine, fee waiver resolution and civic center banquet and gym rental agreement with the Quapaw Tribe for the week of the young child. $1,500 rental, total requested $1,500. And I believe that's the item that we were handed earlier. Brian, is that correct? Okay. I know Phyllis was here earlier, but she, I told her she needed to wait around an hour for this meeting. Does anybody have any questions on that particular agenda item?
I don't.
Do we have a recommendation or a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second, please? Roll call.
Sharbit.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Forrester.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye. Item number 10, acquisition of Eagle Pitcher property. Chuck?
Thanks, Mayor. As you know, the Eagle Pitcher property on VJ Tunnel has been vacant for a while, and the issues there right now, it's under a bank trust manager that's operating that trust. There's some potential here that that trust is dissolving and the property may be abandoned. So we've been talking with DEQ. I have DEQ staff here today, and they can talk to you about some specifics there. But basically, there's some chlorinated solvent plumes there with the property that they've been monitoring and addressing. There's an existing sump pump that's there that's keeping the plume at bay. Recently, the trust manager turned off all electricity, was cut off out there except for the sump pump. And we want to, we've been encouraged from DEQ to keep that in operation. So if by chance the trust stops paying the electric bill, which is down to about $50, $60 a month, that continues in operation, that we don't disconnect that. Demolishing the structure is estimated, there's some high estimates, about $500,000 of demolishing that. Again, addressing the property through coordination with DEQ, there's some funding that they have to help us with this. And again, I've got Rachel and Alicia here to answer any specifics about the chlorinated plume that's out there, if you have any questions regarding that.
Are they still taking that water and pumping it into the city sewer?
Yes, the sump pump is connected to the sanitary sewer, so that's where it's discharging.
Who's maintaining the equipment to make sure this is on a weekly, what's the routine on who's taking care of it, to make sure it's still operational? Even though we have electric and the pump's working, who's checking on this pump to make sure that it's not broken, even though it has electric?
At this time, it's the responsibility of the agrobاح trusty to maintain the property. He had contractors, and he has a real estate agent. He's kind of, the responsibilities between the two of them. The contractor came out on a pretty regular basis, but the problem is that because the administrative account, or because the administrative trust is running out of money to continue operation, I'm not really sure how long that's going to continue.
That's my fear, is that even though that it's working and nobody likes to work for free anymore, so you're not going to get anybody to go out there. So my question is, who's going to handle that once that's up?
And that's in the basement, Brian, and that basement will flood without that pump.
That's one of my fears.
We can definitely, you know, in working with DEQ on this, ensure that, you know, since we're up here working with them, that somebody's doing that, you know, is taking care of that and ensuring that that's continued.
Regardless of the outcome, this is something that I want to make sure that it's getting taken care of.
Chuck, I think we probably ought to be talking about the title of this item is acquisition of the Eagle Pitcher property. And what DEQ has approached us about in concept is that if the trustees would give us this property at no cost, then we would assume that responsibility. We would make sure that the sump pump keeps operating and that we would not have this chlorinated plume in that situation. The thought then is that we would work with DEQ, and I won't point out because I see two state officers here that want to say we've made you no promises, and I don't want anybody to think that you have made us a promise, but there are programs out there such as the Brownfields program. And we believe, and they're available to us if we have possession of the property. And if we were to work with DEQ, this is going to be a long-range project, not something that's median. We hope that we would be able to tap into that source of funding to not only take the building down, but also remediate this pollution issue. And if you look at it from a strategic point of view, this property is immediately adjacent to one of our most popular parks, and it's also immediately adjacent to our Public Works Department. So it would make sense that the city were to be able to get a hold of this property at zero cost, for a minimal cost, keep the sump pump running so we don't have the pollution issues, and then work on a long-term basis to take that property out of there and create basically more parkland for the community. We think it would be worthwhile. The problem we're running into at this point is, the building's been on the market for a long time, nobody's looking at it. The question about whether the building's even structurally sound has come to pass. There's really not any kind of salvage value in the building. It's mostly masonry, from what we understand. We do have capability in our landfill, I just confirmed this with Glenda, that if it's demolished, that that property or that demolition materials can be properly put into our landfill. And in essence, there doesn't seem to be a really good alternative. Now, you know, if somebody wanted to talk to us about after the Brownfields, about developing it, I think we'd certainly want to talk to them about that. But one of the things that Kim has indicated to me a long time ago was, if I were visioning and saying, wouldn't it be cool if we could put something there like a splash pad after it's been properly demolished, after we've properly taken care of the pollution issues, and create a much larger, bigger park for Miami. But that's the issue at this point is that we're bringing it to you, and the state's bringing it to us, because there are very few options available. And whether or not we'd want to, you know, take advantage of the fact that we could probably get the property at no cost, stabilize the property, make sure that we don't have these pollution issues, and then eventually demolish it for the betterment of our community. That's what they're asking us to do. So, you know, when we're talking about long range, Chuck, I think you were trying to say that, but I think ultimately that's what they're hoping we will step in and do.
Doug, is this right behind Montana Mike's?
200 VJ Tunnel. It's the old EP research.
There's one building that's in use, and then it's just...
The one that's in use is the one that was rezoned recently.
Yes, and that, it does not include that building at all. That building is operational. It's the one that's sitting there empty right now.
To the west, the east.
Any possibility of the city incurring any liability on the cleanup and this potential?
Yes. If we owned it.
Comes out, don't follow with Eagle Pitcher.
What are the parts per million allowable on the chemicals that are in there?
Can you come to the mic before you answer, please? Both of you might just want to move over to those two chairs right there, the two hot seats.
Here's a Google Earth image of the property.
Okay.
The chlorinated solvents are generally not considered in parts per million, it's usually parts per billion. I mean, they're a considerable carcinogen hazard. Allowable's five parts per billion. We're seeing levels, well, there's two contaminants in the groundwater. There's one that's allowable at five parts per billion, and one that's allowable at 22. We're seeing parts at about 10,000. So it's a considerable plume. We did recently do one injection of a material that should help break down the chlorinated solvents. The issue is, that's when the administrative account started run, or the administrative trust started running out of money. We have done one sampling event. Since that injection occurred, it did appear to be breaking down our chlorinated solvents. We're not sure how much more, how much further that's going to go. That'd be something that would need further monitoring as we go along. The Brownfields program has money to help the city continue that monitoring. There are wells in place right now. We can help maintain the wells, and DEQ can come out and continue sampling the wells as we go along. I don't want to give anybody the impression that chlorinated solvents are an easy issue to deal with. It's extremely expensive, they're very hard to treat. But this is a very lucky situation. That plume is stable with the sump pump running. And it may be stable without the sump pump running, too. We haven't, our assumption right now is that that sump pump is drawing in the groundwater around it and discharging it into the sanitary sewer. Our hope is that it is stable without the sump pump running. And then what we would have is a plume that can be managed, because it is contained within the boundaries of the property. Management would mean, any kind of development that would go on, like a closed-in building, might have a vapor mitigation system. But open-air uses, like parkland, splash pads, don't usually require anything special to help address the chlorinated solvents. They're usually an issue in enclosed buildings where what happens is the vapors come up into the building, and then they can't move on. So they concentrate there, and that's what starts impacting human health.
Is there any asbestos in that building?
There is. We did do an asbestos survey, but it is non-friable asbestos, which means that it can be demolished in place with the building.
And taken to the landfill, I'd expect.
Okay. That was a concern.
Legally, I have a pay me now or pay me later sort of concern. If the building continues to become increasingly dilapidated, there probably would come a point when you would have to make a decision as to whether or not you consider it to be the sort of nuisance that required abatement. In the conversations I've participated in, I keep coming back to a likely outcome in which the city is involved in the reclamation, no matter what you'd prefer to do. You may simply end up with it. And I think what's been presented is an opportunity to be proactively involved in that effort from the onset, rather than having it fall into your lap years and years from now.
What's better with the roof over, I'm assuming as soon as we could tear it down, that would be better than being under roof in a basement?
Well... Right now, it's a nuisance. It's a nuisance attractor, I would think. That if I was a high school student, that would look like something I'd like to break into. Realistically.
But the fact is, it right now looks like a place, regardless of who owns it, that's a problem we've got.
Right. The issue that we're looking at right now, working with the administrative trust, is that they're out of money to continue operating, and he's going to go to court to abandon the property. When that happens, it's in legal limbo, because nobody owns it, and the previous owner, the trust, will dissolve, and there will be a period of time to go to, which means that it'll sit in limbo for three years. My understanding is, at that point, the county will probably seize it for back taxes, because there'll be nobody paying taxes on the property. I don't know, three years, I don't know what your development timelines are. It's not necessarily a bad thing for the environmental issues, for it to be in limbo for three years. I spoke with your code enforcement officer. We do think that there's maybe some language within the code enforcement that would allow DEQ to go in and continue monitoring the plume to ensure that it's not migrating off the site during that three-year period. That might give us time to consider treatment options, to kind of see how the plume behaves. But it's going to sit there and be a nuisance that entire three years, because we won't be able to do anything.
Let me interject something to David. If there's not language that allows us to do that, can you get some ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The question I have relates to a conversation I had with staff over the last two weeks about the matter. Is there something about the status of the title to the property that affects the availability of potential, or potential availability of Brownfield, Brownsfield funding? In other words, if the city took ownership of the property, does that make the likelihood of available funding greater? She's nodding her head up and down.
Yes. DEQ has funding available, but we can't do work for private entities. It's a public entity, like a nonprofit or the city, we can continue to do work for. We can go ahead and continue monitoring those wells.
So if it sits in limbo for three years, it's ownership is not in public hands. It may be in what you call limbo, but we could say it's not publicly owned, in which case you would not be able to make available that Brownsfield funding until some public entity took ownership after the three-year period. Is that right?
Something we're looking into currently. There is, there would be funding available to continue the monitoring, but the issue is that we can't do work on the property without the agreement of the owner. And if there's no owner, that means that we can't do any further, like any destructive work.
So that creates a timing, would you say that creates a timing issue or a timeliness issue, a short window now?
If you want to take title to it now, yes.
I don't. But if...
Right. If the city's interested in it.
Are you saying otherwise, it defers the decision for three years, effectively?
Yes. The only thing that we would be able to do is to help continue monitoring during that three years. But we wouldn't have funding available to address the demolition of the building.
One more. So, under that scenario, any necessary nuisance abatement that had to be performed by the city might be paid by the city without, and I'm talking about demolition work primarily, but that would, if it occurred, have to be paid for by the city without contribution by ODQ?
Right. DEQ can't provide the funding without clear title of ownership.
So there's something in this of a leap of faith, because you can't promise funding, right?
No, they cannot.
No, especially not right, not right now. Yes.
You're more likely to get it if the city owns it. Correct.
Okay.
And you're not three years behind. Correct.
This magical word of funding, there is no number to that, so I mean...
We, we wouldn't, I'm trying to think of how best to phrase this. DEQ doesn't generally provide funding, like we don't cut a check for anybody, but we do the work. So that's another thing to consider, is that it would be whatever the cost is for demolition of the building versus you have a certain amount of money to get it done in.
You may not be the person for me, you may not, excuse me, allergies, you may not be the person for me to ask this question, but you're who I have to work with, so I'm going to ask you a question. In the last few years, has ODEQ utilized these sources of funding to do remediation of sites similar to this one?
Yes. It depends on how similar you mean.
You mean the ballpark?
Yes. Well, we have remediated sites, we have helped address contamination issues on-site, including large disposal projects. We cleaned up a gun range for the Commissioner of the Land Office. I believe that project is still going on. These are not inexpensive projects. This is within the scope of the kinds of projects the DEQ has done through the Site Cleanup Assistance Program, so.
How competitive, how competitive is this funding market you described? Do you have a lot of people trying to get in line to get to this funding?
Two different sources. The source that we would be using to do the monitoring, that's not particularly competitive. We haven't had to turn anybody away for that. The demolition funding would be more competitive. And then it's also tied to what we, what happens after, during the legislative session, where state agency and our funding is available to the state if they need it to make their bills.
Is that, is that an annual cycle, where if you didn't get funding the first year, you would apply again the next year?
What happens is, the project goes onto a list, and it's addressed in order as funding is available.
So if it's an approved project, then as money's become available?
It will get done as soon as funding's available.
So how quickly do you think the trust is going to move to abandon the property? I mean, is it, they indicated that that's imminent?
Well, we're never really sure what to expect from the trust. They said that they were going to abandon it last October. Then recently, they told us that they were going to abandon it by mid-February. That hasn't happened yet. But I can say that we are the last two properties out of, I believe, 15 different properties that they were dealing with. They've run out of money, and I think that they're, they're ready to move on and close the trust.
And so it would probably be fair to say six months or less?
Probably.
And I know you can't speak for them, but based on the way you've seen things unfold and evolve?
I would assume that they're going to let us know within the next couple of months whether they intend to abandon.
Can we, you said there's been one injection already. Is it, is it possible that we can negotiate them for some of those, with them for some of those remaining funds, if we take title, that we also get some of those funds for whatever purpose it might be?
I don't believe that there's enough funds left.
To matter. Okay.
As I understand it, the trust is insolvent.
Yes, they have no, well, the way that the trust was set up is that there was one pool of money for the administrative functions of the trust, and then another to address the environmental. We have a little bit of money left in the environmental portion, but you're looking at about $10,000.
What did it cost for the injection process last time, approximately? Do you know?
$50,000.
Okay, so significantly more. Okay. And there's a second property, not here in Miami, I guess, but you said there were initially 15?
In Michigan. Yes.
So this is a federal trust, it sounds like?
Yes, it was negotiated through EPA.
Okay.
If the city were to take title, what if, just a what-if moment, if the city council at some point in time were to accept title to the property, what obligations would be imposed on the city by ODEQ?
The, it's all a guessing game at this point, I want to make that clear. But the biggest obligation with that property would be to prevent that plume from moving, from migrating. Right now, we have the sump pump functioning, and that seems to be keeping it in place.
But we don't know that, you said earlier. We don't know.
Yes, we don't know that the sump pump is responsible for maintaining that plume. It could be geography, it could be the geology of the area is keeping it in place, too. This property has been monitored since 2006, and we haven't seen the plume move. So seven years of monitoring.
How close are the wells? What's the concentration like? I mean, could you tell if it moved 10 feet? Are they that well-placed, if you will?
Yes, there are a number of wells within that property. We're looking at about 35 different wells.
And is the water that comes out of the sump pump, has that been tested, and does it have contaminants in it?
We did test it once. I'm not remembering what our levels were looking like. I believe that they did have detectable chlorinated solvents within them, though.
Is detectable beyond the acceptable level, or just detectable?
It's beyond the acceptable level, yes.
David's pointing at me, and I'm going to make a comment. He's prompting me here. When this issue first came up, I did talk to our treatment plant operator about the permitting of this. Was he aware that this was, and he was aware of this, and this was a permitted function, understanding?
Thank you.
Questions?
I would...
It's kind of a darned if you do, darned if you don't.
I would like to, I would like to point out that normally, this is an item we would have brought you in a study session to talk about in depth. And we're trying to kind of shorten up our meetings, but as you can tell, there's a timeframe. But we're not asking you for a decision this evening. But I do think that it's important to know that we are in active discussions with ODEQ. They have approached us, and I think, just as you said, Your Honor, this is kind of a darned if you do, darned if you don't situation. And basically, looking at it, number one, what's the best for our community right now, and making sure that we don't have additional problems. And number two, on a long-range basis, opening up some potential for outside funding that could come in, that could turn something that is a very big detriment to our community, to something that could be a very big positive for the community.
So let me ask for a little clarification on that point. If we got this Brownfield funding for remediation, are we talking about going in and digging out all that soil and making sure there's nothing there, or what is that process?
The funding that we have right now, that we've been in discussions with, has largely focused around demolition of the building.
Okay.
Because, like I said, that the chlorinated solvents... Because, like I said, that the chlorinated solvents, your real concern is what settles inside of a building from what comes through the, the soil, settles inside the building and what people are breathing. Um, so our major focus in the previous discussions has been demolishing the building. We haven't really discussed what it would take to address the chlorinated solvents themselves.
So we would have deed restrictions on that property, I think, it would be a natural outcome of that.
And, and obviously, if there was a public use for that, we wouldn't wanna be absolutely sure it's safe for our public to use.
So I guess all of our concern is this, um, issue of migration. If we're potentially held liable for that migration, um, I don't know how we deal with that. And, you know, as David said, we may just have to anyway. At this point, it sounds to me like in the legal steps in the process, it's actually the county that would eventually be dealing with it if they chose to foreclose for taxes.
If they chose to.
Yeah.
The paperwork was completed.
If they didn't, then what happens is, and let's assume that plume migrates, let's just assume worst case, um, our residents are potentially being effective, and we're not doing anything proactive to prevent it.
Correct.
But when we take that step, we kinda take on the responsibility and liability also.
If you assume ownership, yes, your honor.
Well, if we don't assume ownership, we still have a responsibility to protect our residents, and we're not doing anything proactive to do that.
Correct. What I would hope is our work with O D E Q is we know we have basically an equilibrium right now, keeping the power to the sump pump and keeping the sump pumps operating. What I would hope if we proceed on this is that there's an understanding that as long as we were taking those actions, if the migration were to get worse or something like that, that would not be because of many issues that we've had. In other words, what O D E Q is looking at right now is keeping the power on and keeping the sump pumps running, and then from here on out, then we could work with them on ways to be able to demolish that building and repurpose that property. But the immediate issue right now is keeping the power on and keeping the sump pumps running.
You said you've been monitoring since two thousand and six, correct?
That was when the first wells were put in, yes.
At any other, uh, sites with this type of issue, with what you're saying, you haven't seen any migration, it hasn't moved, correct?
On this particular site, yes.
Yes, okay, do you have, at, at any other sites that you guys are aware of within, what are we saying now? Um, eight years, does, does, in so many, nine years, do we see stuff start moving then, or is this, I mean?
Things can happen, I mean, you know, you put in new sewer lines, it changes the geology, it changes the flow of groundwater in the area, and it could, I, I can't tell you that it won't ever. I, I don't have that crystal ball. Um, I can tell you for seven years it hasn't, I can tell you that there are monitoring wells in place for us to determine if it begins to start moving.
Do we know the depth of this plume? I mean, when, when you use the term plume, it applies to me, it implies that it comes all the way up to the surface, but that's not the case with the other situation we're dealing with, so do we know if this is?
These are chlorinated solvents, chlorinated solvents sink. So what we have in this particular site, it's actually, um, two different aquifers. There's a small perched one that the basement is actually sitting in, um. I think we have T C A, T C E mix in there, I'm not sure if that means anything to you. Um, and then there's a deeper aquifer, bedrock aquifer, that is affected too, and these are two separate, two separate zones.
How large, looking at this television screen on the monitor, um, how large is the area affected by the plume, compared to, say, the size of the structure?
Um, I have maps.
I don't know whether it's something that fills the entire parcel of land, or it could be a much smaller thing.
Can you just step to the screen and kinda show us, this one, please?
Um.
That, that's, yeah, we can't see the one.
The smaller aquifer, or the perched aquifer that the basement is sitting in, is smaller, so that's the, so it's largely in this area right here.
Okay.
Um, the bedrock aquifer is gonna be much larger, like, about that.
So about half of the size of the building?
And how deep?
Oh, um, well, the basement is sitting in the perched aquifer. Um, the other one's about twenty-two feet deep, I think that's where most of our wells are.
And so these, um, contaminants are sinking, though, they're not migrating to the surface.
Right, they're sitting at the bottom of the aquifer, but what happens is that they, um, turn into a gas and start rising. So it'll rise up into the structure.
So would it clear, what you're saying, it would clear it quicker if there was no b- building there?
Well, I, it wouldn't affect the groundwater itself. The groundwater is gonna continue to have the chlorinated solvents in it until microbial action breaks it down. Um, the, the benefit of having open area is that the fumes, once they come up past the surface, they don't collect. Because what happens is, it's the concentration as it's in the air, as people breathe, that affect their health. If you have an open area, wind comes by, there's not a way for it to concentrate and affect people.
Can you detect the concentration as it's coming out here?
Um, it, as it collects in the air inside of a building, or as it collects under a, um, like a concrete slab.
It dissipates very quickly once it reaches the
Much in the air.
surface level.
Yes.
At that rate of dissipation, do you think it would, the air quality would violate any standards?
I don't believe so. I mean, we can, we can monitor it, if you're interested in finding that out.
Well, I was just wondering, i- i-
But it should.
If, if the building were gone, and that was a, a park, grassy field, a park, would the gas coming out of the soil constitute a health hazard?
I couldn't say for sure, but I can say that we've never seen that problem before in an open space. And this is, this is not an atypical problem. D E Q sees several of these, it's very similar to the kind of cleaning solvents that they use at joint cleaners. A lot of the same exact issues.
So it sounds like we, if it was demoed, and then we would need to wait a while and monitor the air quality and go from there. Okay, so I think we've asked all the questions probably for tonight we need to ask, um, but we will need to revisit this again very soon.
Absolutely, we will.
Anything else before we move on? Thank you very much. Okay, we are now to item eleven, amendments to city ordinances pertaining to the unlawful operation of a motor vehicle while under the influence of alcohol or other intoxicating substances into lesser related defense of operation of a motor vehicle while impaired. David?
Very simple housekeeping measure, uh, about a week ago, Carrie with the municipal court spoke to me about the fact that the ordinances that defined, uh, DUI, driving while impaired, uh, were just a little bit behind the times, and so that same day, I prepared the ordinance you have before you in redline format, and then in the final format for signature, uh, to make them consistent with the definitions for these offenses that are utilized in the Oklahoma state statutes.
Any questions for David?
No.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved, mayor.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Johnson? Aye. Weston?
Aye.
Sharbit?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye, item twelve's emergency clause on the same item.
Most approved.
And a second? I'll second that.
Sharbit?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, item thirteen, update on Miami rail spur project, Christie?
All right, so, you get an update on?
Can you pull the mic down?
Uh, okay.
Thank you.
Is that better? I can't help it, I'm short. Um, we just wanted to come and give you guys a quick update on where we're at with the rail spur. Um, we don't anticipate there being a decision on the council's part until after the phase one environmental assessment is done, which will hopefully be within the next month or two. So, um, where we're at right now with the project is, been able to secure the letter of intent from B N S F, turning over, um, the rail spur and right-of-way property to the, to the city. There's still some conditions that need to be met on that letter of intent that we're working on right now. Um, the phase one environmental assessment, we're working on that right now, actually with Rachel, and, uh, O D E Q, and working on some Brownsville funding for that. Um, we're actually in the application process in that right now. There's, we're also working on, the city's working on the request for proposal for the short-line operator and the construction work that needs to be done to repair the rail to the point that we can begin to service the, the two, um, industries or manufacturers that are located on the rail right now that have had service in the past, um, from the rail, and that's Scepter and, and Hopkins. Um, once the city approves the, of the short-line operator, then B N S F will have to also approve with that operator. The city will have a contract with them, and then B N S F will also have a contract with them. So there's two, two parts to that. The other piece that we're working on right now is, um, the city along with Maids is starting the process in working with, um, where we're able to get grant funding to help with the more, uh, the major long-term repairs that need to be made to the rail.
Got a cost estimate, Christie?
A lot.
A lot?
Actually, we do have, we have a couple of, um, cost estimates. We have an estimate of about five hundred thousand for the short-term, the shorter-term repairs, which is basically going to be replacement of, um, rail ties and some, uh, nothing with the rail is minor, but some more minor repairs to get, um, service up and going. And then the repair work that's longer term is just over a million, one point three, and that'll be, that's replacement of actual rail and, um, some work on switches and things like that. Also some work on the, um, shipping yard.
I, I know when we first talked about, I think you were on the council, and, uh, we talked about creating interest with other industries in town to, to take part in the rail, you got an update on that?
Do you wanna talk about?
Judy?
We, we actually are, um, that'll be in the long, long term. There's conversations going on right now around the rail, and if you talk, if you've, when you come to some of the comprehensive planning projects, the rail always comes up as needing it up and going to improve, um, our city from an economic development standpoint. Judy has mentioned, Judy with Maids has mentioned several times that the rail comes up in conversations with, um, future prospects. So as the rail, right now, our focus is getting the rail up and going to service what we've got, to help retain the jobs that we already have, and then build, hopefully, on those jobs with the current manufacturers. There's a few, um, organizations or businesses that are close to the rail that there's conversations going on with, or will be in the future as far as what they might be able to utilize the rail for.
I, I wanna go back to something you just said. The two current manufacturers there, at least one of them has some excess capacity in the plant, and, and so they're very interested in this project, because it may help them in their business, is that right?
They both are, yeah.
How many miles of rail are you talking about?
It's three point, I think it's three point four six miles.
How many?
Three quarters of a mile of that is just easement. Because the rail has been taken up, it could be extended out another three quarters of a mile.
How many different crossings is there involved?
I don't know.
In regards to these crossings, I know it's been talked about in the past about, uh, closing and getting extra.
At least seven that I can count in my mind right now.
Is this something, Chuck, that you think that could be considered onto that, or do we just, are, we already moving forward in regards to? I know it's kind of off topic, but is that something that?
Right now, those, that line's not active, and it's not part of the discussions. When that becomes active, I'm not sure how that goes into the formulas that, for the safety funds for the trains, is the number of traffic on, on the rails, number of traffic on the crossings, of how that would fit into the safety funds that are available. Not sure at this time.
Well, Brian, I think they-
Judy, can you come up to the mic, please?
Uh, B N S F, B N S F had mentioned before, they gave us the letter of intent several years ago, that they were looking at asking the city to do some crossings, not in that area. It was mainly in the southeast and the northeast, as they, they wanted some crossings closed. But it wasn't in this area, and that was kind of a, uh, they thought that would be a trade-off for them, for us to get this rail up and going. But there is, there are a couple of companies that, you know, that are located past the rail where the rail ends that are interested in the rail, also, besides the two companies that it would serve right now.
Would this run all the way into North Miami?
Yes.
What you're talking about?
The easement, whenever we had talked to B N S F, they said, you know, if we donate the rail to the city, that you have to take the other three quarters of a mile, which was kind of a no-brainer to us. We said, sure, you know, we would take it. But that's, that's what they're looking at.
What we take in on the crossings in regards to this, of that money that you were talking about, um, does that include crossing gates and stuff, so they'll be all just basically a sign and that's it? Or do they provide that, or is that at our cost in regards to those crossings?
Well, I think some of that was in the cost of the rail, a portion of that.
That's what I'm getting at, is, I mean, I'd love to have crossing gates at all of them, but is that gonna be?
Right.
That's not included in the cross, crossing gates and that, that's my-
Yeah, that's pretty cost prohibitive, it's, it's very expensive.
I'm aware of that, that's why I don't know, is it included or not?
Six, a quarter of a million.
Yeah, we had the gates, I know they, they always had the gates on Main Street, but on the others, there, there was not. I think, I believe on, it seemed like on Goodrich Boulevard, they had the lights, flashing lights.
Judy, would you or Christie speak to, uh, the city's liability with, because Brian's bringing up crossings and crossing gates and the, the state of Maine transaction without getting really into the weeds? Why we're approaching this the way we are with an operator from a liability standpoint?
Because they would, they would cover the liability. They would cover the liability insurance, and that was one of the holdups previously, uh, with previous administration that, uh, the liability for the crossings, and with the short-line operator, that would be their responsibility. They carry the insurance on that.
Our obligation is to, uh, on the city's, sorry. Our obligation on the city's part is to get the rail up and operable, and then after that point, then whoever is the short-line operator assumes that responsibility from there. So future repair and work that needs to be done, it, that, that's their responsibility.
Okay, other questions? I know Judy's been working on this for ten or twelve years or more.
Fifty.
And, uh-
No, it was nineteen, ninety-eight.
And the city, of course, we've, we've gotten the ball this far down the field, Judy and Maids has, but if the city's gonna take possession, you know, it's appropriate that we've gotten involved at this point, and I, I mean, I feel like we're really making a lot of progress, um, in the last year or so, and it has a lot of potential for our community, uh, but there, there are some costs involved. And they're going after grants to offset some of those costs. We don't have, they don't have a number yet to bring to the council and say, here's kinda what, what we need, but, um, that's basically the point of the update, is to let us know where we are, and that they'll be coming to us before long with a number.
Yeah, there's, uh, what I wanted to, to let you guys know, that we'll be back in front of the council once the phase one is completed with what those results are, and that'll be a decision then the council has as to whether we, we move forward or what the next, what you guys would prefer the next steps to be after the phase one is completed. So all, and then we would be back in front of the council if we had to go to a phase two. That would be another point in which we would be back in front of the council saying, these are the results, and, you know.
Phase one and phase two are environmental studies.
Right.
Um, along the track, this, you know, if there've been spills in the past, that, they, that sort of thing. Any questions for Christie? All right, thank you. Item fourteen, David, have we?
Uh, your honor, I'm clear on fourteen and fifteen.
Okay, we're then moving, and item sixteen, I don't think we're ready to take up yet, Kim, are we? Or are we? Okay, and same with seventeen, just working out job description stuff still, right? Everything else is taken care of, just gotta clarify- Everything else is taken care of, just gotta clarify the job description stuff. Um, item eighteen, new business, Dean, anything?
Not for this meeting, Your Honor.
Nineteen, staff reports?
Mayor, I've got something to ask, uh, if Tyler and Joe would come up for a minute if they don't mind. I think they knew this was coming. Did you update, Sir Tyler, on our shelter?
Yes, sir, um, we have the shelter out for bid. It'll be.
Animal shelter.
The animal shelter. It'll be in the newspaper, uh, win, tomorrow, actually. Um, and we're looking at a pre-bid meeting on April fourteenth and we should open bids on April twenty-second. So.
Okay.
Question. What about, uh, bridge, Mark Dale?
Uh, yes, sir, it's, uh, it's going good. Um, we had the three weeks there, we really couldn't work on it because of the snow. But, um, we've been grouting the pieces together, um, the last couple of days and, and we're looking at pouring the deck on it next week. So then, once we do that, then we're putting the guardrails up, traffic rail. So I mean, I don't know if we're gonna make our end of April deadline that we've kind of set for ourselves, but we're going as fast as we can right now, so.
It's looking good. I've just had some questions, some people asked me about it. I just want to give them an update.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Joe.
Hey, on our citywide cleanup too, I don't want to brag on these guys.
Yeah.
Uh, seventy, approximately seventeen, seventy tons in two days.
Thirty-three tons yesterday and thirty-six tons today, from what I've gotten from you guys.
Wow. In two days.
And you had some equipment problem.
Awesome. Okay, anything else for staff? Nineteen, the city manager communications.
I was gonna bring up the, uh, citywide cleanup, so we've taken care of that.
Are you also, and I have the, um, uh, resolution here in front of me now, I'm gonna read under council announcements, but are you going to be speaking when they honor Willie and Jane Osborne next week?
Yes, I, I appreciate your allowing me to do that, but, uh, NEO knew that, I knew the Osbournes very well when I lived here before. We were actually next door neighbors for a while, so, uh, they've asked and I appreciate your allowing me to read the, um, proclamation at the NEO function.
Okay. I am, and, and I'm gonna jump back now on the item because I do want to read it, uh, for the benefit of the camera and the viewers. Um, this is under the mail-in council committee announcements. Bear with me for a moment. Uh, this is a declaration of March twenty-seven, two thousand fifteen. It is Willie and Jane Osborne Day in the city of Miami, Ottawa County, Oklahoma. Whereas Mayor Rudy Schultz and the Miami City Council believe it is important to recognize citizens who distinguish themselves by various means and who have made significant contributions to our community. Whereas the Miami City Council believes Willie and Jane Osborne are such individual, individuals worthy of being recognized. Whereas Willie and Jane have provided support and leadership on northeastern Oklahoma A and M college campus as well as throughout the city of Miami and various civic and charitable organizations. Whereas in true partnership, Willie and Jane Osborne founded Osborne Drugs in nineteen seventy-one and together met the needs of the community as Willie worked behind the pharmacy counter while Jane did her soft promotions. Whereas for more than five decades, Willie Osborne served the Miami community as a dedicated pharmacist and was honored with numerous prestigious awards. Whereas Jane Osborne is the granddaughter of State Representative James Maven, a founder of the Miami School of Mines that later became northeastern Oklahoma A and M College and was named NEO outstanding alumna in nineteen ninety-six. Whereas Willie and Jane were honored with the prestigious award of merit for their dedication to NEO in two thousand nine for their lifetime support of the college. And whereas Willie and Jane Osborne have made significant contribution to this community in the form of giving their time, energy, resources and valuable insight, which will inspire area residents and NEO students and faculty for generations that they are deserving and being, deserving of being recognized. Now therefore, it be, be it resolved that Mayor Schultz and the Miami City Council do hereby declare Friday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, is Willie and Jane Osborne Day on the campus of NEO A and M College and within the city of Miami. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand on this date. And I just want to say that certainly they, Willie and Jane, are very deserving of the honor from NEO and it's a privilege for me as mayor to sign the proclamation. And, uh, those of you that are able, I would encourage you to, uh, turn out on the twenty-seventh, uh, when they are recognized. That's all that I have. Anybody else have any announcements?
I have one, Mayor. Uh, just on the subject of the shelter, Tyler and Joe, appreciate your work on it. Mike first, you've been working on it for a long time and I appreciate that. Uh, I did get a question of, uh, how you can donate to it. I want to thank Jill for getting me that information. Uh, it's the Oklahoma Community Foundation. That's who you make the check out to. And make sure you have put Miami Animal Shelter on it. And if you have any questions, uh, you can contact Lindsey Snackenberg here at the Civic Center or me, either one. Anybody would be glad to help you. Thank you.
And Christie just whispered in my ear and I appreciate it that, a reminder that on the twenty-sixth of March is the open house for our comprehensive plan, our first one. That's going to be at the NEO Ballroom from six until eight P M. And again, this is a come and go open house, so if citizens are welcome to be there for the entire two hours or if they would just want to stop in and give, give us some of their thoughts. It's very much an idea to talk to our community, let them tell us some of their ideas. We'll have it set up in such a way that people will be able to talk to us about various issues. But it's gonna be more of a, of a give and take and more of a, of a come and go and be able to talk to our community, much like we talk to each other very often. So looking forward to that.
I, I think Christie kind of described the format where there may be ten tables and different topics and you can go around each table and give your ideas on the various topics.
That's correct.
And we've invited, um, members of the school board to be present if they can. Um, Dr. Hale, I think is gonna be there. Um, anyone that has a position of leadership within the community, we're encouraging them to be there, so that.
And of course, our steering committee too.
And, and all the members of the steering committee should be there. So, um, please, uh, please come out and share your ideas for our community on the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, correct.
Between six and eight P M. Anything else? Okay, item number twenty-two, future agenda planning, anything there, Dean?
No.
Then I will make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Doug made the second. Roll call, please.
Schultz?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Sharbit?
Aye.
Forrester?